And that's just a photo to help highlight it. And then I, it was 13 to 14 parcels in total. And this map shows where all of those are. You can see the various houses in vacant. Here's a current zoning map. And this really highlights what really matches the real on-the-ground uses. You can see by scale what looks like a residential neighborhood. To the east is M2, a heavier industrial zone district. While to the south and west is live work. And you can tell pretty quickly it starts to turn more residential, commercial, or civic uses even between the school and the boys and girl club coming in across the street. And looking at the zoning map, seeing the live work one to the south, that is made up of all single-family homes, or some of them could be duplexes, but you know, they, it looks like a row of houses. And so the staff interpretation was to bring that further north in, for two reasons. A, it matches the residential character. Live work one is a less intensive use. And there were no concerns brought forward from any resident, but you could also look at this as a manufacturing use. We are changing what is allowed there. And live work one does permit some small commercial or maker spaces. So to, to an extent, you know, that flexibility would still exist for these homeowners or property owners if they want to do something beyond just a, a single-family home. And I think that was further supported by the, the mixed use by zoning and land use. So, you know, it's kind of hard to sandwich in a single-family zoning here was the thought. Here is the land use. The colors in the lots in question, the yellow are residential. That more, I don't know what I'd call that, light brown, light yellow, dull yellow maybe. Those are vacant lots. And the hash marks just indicate that for whatever reason, that's a tax-exempt parcel. It just means whoever owns it is not subject to property taxes. For example, it could be a city-owned property, or maybe a church just happens to own a piece of land. And now this is the future land use map, and you can see that divide. We do have a manufacturing and residential in our future land use map, but this is all within the neighborhood edge and the urban edge. When you dig into those future land use, urban edge is a close match to live work two, little heavier commercial industrial uses and residential. Live work one being lighter on the industrial-commercial, more primarily focused on residential, which recognizes the transitionary area of the physical built form of the city here. So a rezoning is subject to the public participation plan, and you know, it's something we followed in working with the neighbors. This one was a high-impact, low geography. You get a little Cartesian coordinate square for your recommended actions. And two that I had discussed with the Moores was to either host an open house for me to sit there and be available at the Edison Association, or mail postcards, or do door-knocking. Because of work schedules and different timing, different times people work, the neighbors had landed on the postcard. We did receive one response from the postcard when I was taking photographs. I spoke to a resident. And we received three returned mails. The postcard went out a week before the notice, and then the notices went out. And they were, they were successful, I think. And there, right there is just to zoom in on the map to help highlight. The purple is what is proposed for live work one. And you could see, if you look closely, that one in the southeast corner is that pond which would go to live work two. And some photos to put it into context, this is Roskam Court looking south from Crosstown Parkway. You can see the, the houses and the vacant lots. That kind of growth, you, you can see on the maps, the railroad that goes through there. They just owned some wide right-of-way. That will, unless the railroad goes away, there's no foreseen change on those. So those weren't included. And this is a photograph at Roskam Court at the other end, looking back towards Crosstown Parkway. Here is now facing to the right, or to the east, Millard Court. And you can see that is a recycling processing facility over there. Louis C. Howard has a number of buildings over there. So you can really see the, how it's sandwiched between those uses. All active uses, residential and commercial. And this is now at the end of Millard Court, looking back towards Roskam Court. A narrow little street with a couple houses on there. And you know, some of the houses have been updated, so you know, the area continues to attract residents and investment. And lastly, I just got this photo to kind of show again that transition area. I think it was 2019, 2020, the site plan for this facility was approved. And it was made up of some vacant parcels. And you could see the industrial zoned here. And then down the street there is all the live work one of those houses on the north side of Vine, with Roskam and Millard being behind that. So with all of that, in the zoning ordinance for a rezoning, there's five criteria to base the decision on. Staff is recommending approval of that. And the criteria is, you know, to the extent, is it consistent with the master plan? As highlighted by the future land use map and the development scenarios, it is believed that this is consistent with the future land use plan. And it also opens up housing and opportunities for housing to be developed where it isn't occurring right now, and it makes a lot of sense for it, including for the many residents that live on these streets. The extent to which conditions have changed that required amendment. The property has been zoned this way at least since the 1970s, and I can confirm that in a 1932 zoning map, it was also zoned manufacturing. So when you look at that southeast section of downtown, a lot of that was zoned manufacturing. A lot of industries used to be there on the low-lying river, or the river used to cut through there. So it's kind of a relic of then. You could see when the houses were developed over 100 years ago. So the condition is that nothing has changed. This zoning seemingly hasn't worked for 100 years to steer a change in the land use. The homes are still there, so, and it's consistent with the future land use map. The extent to which the proposed amendment addresses demonstrated community need. This removes obviously the barrier of the conforming land use to allow building of a new residential use. A little bit of a nuance, a non-conforming designation, when I did speak to the owners of 736 East Crosstown, in the last couple of years, they had made some investments in their home, and they commented, well, we didn't run into any issues with our zoning. But that does sometimes happen. If you were to put an addition on your house and you need a loan, or if you want to sell your home, the fact that if it was damaged in a fire is one of those hidden costs. So that is another intent of redoing this, where then the homes just become permitted by right. And as referenced earlier, there's still flexibility for manufacturing or commercial uses, should anyone still want anything that was allowed in the M1 zone. The extent to which the proposed amendment is compatible with the existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject land, and it's appropriate for the zone district, or the proposed amendment to the text of this ordinance will improve the compatibility amongst uses to ensure efficient development within the city. Staff believes that this is compatible with the existing and proposed land uses. It is an area of the city much better suited for the flexibility in our form-based codes that did not exist in our residential, commercial, industrial. So given that complex of uses that these are sandwiched between, that's where the live work one is believed to be a great fit for this, much rather than the industrial zoning. And to the extent which a proposed amendment would result in logical and early development pattern, as mentioned before, it sits in that transitionary zone. There appears to be, or there is, investment in the homes, maintaining of the housing stock and available land to develop new housing with residents seeking to. So the form-based codes have setbacks which would mirror the setbacks in the scale of the property. So the rezoning wouldn't say permit something drastically out of scale at the rest of the area. And it could only be perhaps, allow more opportunities than the former M zoning when there's no manufacturing whatsoever. So with that, that's the presentation. If there's any questions on it, again, staff provides, is supportive of the request to rezone the properties.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead.
Could you put on the screen the map of the proposed zoning?
Yep.
I wasn't finding that in the back. Okay. Thank you.
The underlying gray is the existing, and I tried to color the hatch match.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we'll open the floor for public comment and off the phone. If anyone wants to call in, the number is 888-382-9556. Or anyone, come speak if they want.
You are on with the planning commission in reference to public hearing for a rezoning quest on Roskam and Millard Court.
My name's Richard Stewart. Your live feed ended 3 minutes and 40 seconds in, so I've been unable to watch. My name's Richard Stewart. I own 824, 828, and 842 Portage Street. I just wanted to express my concerns that city staff, unelected bureaucrats, have used zoning as a weapon against the existing property owners. It happened to me. They took away my prime zoning. And I want to make sure you've reached out to the existing property owners and have given them the opportunity to say yes or no to this proposal. Our neighborhood, I've been here since 1987, has been the most diverse business zone in the entire city, bar none. And you are using zoning to end the diverse characteristics of our neighborhood. And I think it's appalling that you have stepped into a diverse neighborhood and used as a weapon zoning to make all of the commercial district the same. It historically has been successful because it is not all the same. And you are using that as a weapon. And I think it's despicable. And I haven't been able to watch the meeting, so I've missed out. But I'm bringing this to your attention. Also, I think you need to prioritize remote participation for those of us who are unable to attend in person, speak publicly at the microphone. I think you should not hold public meetings if your technology is not working, just like if the power went out in the meeting room you're in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other calls?
No other calls.
So with that, we can close public comment time and open the floor for any motions or
I just have a question. Maybe Bobby, you could talk a little bit about the proposed zoning and all the uses that are allowed within it? Thanks.
That is a, a good question. It permits residential uses there from 1 to, it goes 1 duplex, 3+ and 5+. All of those residential uses are permitted. Maker space, which is, can be a little retail space with a small-scale manufacturing behind it. Adult and child foster care homes are permitted uses. And standing here right now, there's probably some light commercial uses. I don't have that right now, but I'm glad I could, I could look it up, so. But it's, it's generally, there's probably some really light ones because live work could peer on some of those main corridors.
Thanks.
As for the one parcel which is to be rezoned, M2, is there any significant changes to its uses or allowable uses under the new code and zoning?
No, that one is unique in that the facility is made up of a couple of legacy tax parcels that have not been combined. It's not unusual for that to happen. Sometimes the same entity owns it, and they just pay some tax bills. So that is the case there because the site plan shows like the three or four collective parcels, and that is a pond on it. So whether the property owner were to combine it into one, or it operates this way, it's not, it would, it would permit the heavier use. But currently, the sorting facility next door and the transport, they transport a lot of boxes, is within the facility next door. So in theory, that could expand, but it's already a stormwater pond. It would, the whole site would have to redevelop. So it's, since it's owned by them and used by that, it was thought best just to keep it over there with it, so. And the, the access to it, it's unique. You can see, you cannot get to that property from Roskam Court. So it technically has no street frontage, but the owner obviously have, has access to the site into the east.
You said you got some feedback from the postcards or the outreach you got. Was there any, the general consensus was?
The consensus of the person who called on the postcard was that they were for it. They've lived in their house a long time, and if it would make it easier for their house to be a house, they were supportive of it. And when I was taking photographs, there was a man on the east side of Millard getting ready, you know, obviously asking, hey, who are you and why are you taking pictures? Gave him a brief overview, and kind of the same sentiment. That makes a lot of sense. And he referenced, yes, I saw that card. He didn't seem too worried about it, but I think that little conversation gave him the information. And then obviously, the Moores live in two houses on the street, so they were obviously supportive. And in my conversations with them, I'm sure that in with the neighbors, they, you know, this is coming. So only comments that were supportive of that we did receive.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or discussion? Are we ready for a motion? I will also say that I am appreciative of uses. I understand the caller's concern, but I understand, when we're moving from non-conforming to conforming use, I think that that reflects what the people want, so. All right. Who would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the rezoning request from the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development to change the zoning of all properties on Roskam Court, Millard Court, and 736 East Crosstown Parkway from manufacturing to live work and manufacturing two.
Odette Baumann?
Yeah, wait, wait, wait a second.
I'll second.
All right. All right. Any further discussion or, all right. Okay, we can proceed with the roll call then.
All right. Odette Baumann?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
De Senzo?
Yes.
Costizwa?
I will get you to say that. Yes.
That's all right. Pitalko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Tolber?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
All right. This then moves on to the city commission. It will take two meetings.
Excellent. And, all right. So with that, we will close the public hearing. But as a reminder to anyone watching, there will be another opportunity for public comment near the end of the agenda. Is your mic on, though? I'm not hearing you as well.
It does not. It sounds like a little bit.
Okay. It's, yeah, it's fairly quiet.
I don't know the volume.
Our next item are the election of officers. So rather than using the not-it system, would anyone like to, what order do we go in? Chair, vice chair, secretary?
It, I don't, it doesn't make a difference either way. You could either start with the chair, down to secretary, or if you want to do it in reverse with the lower officer.
Well, just.
And in previous years, you know, there's been discussion with the vote, or I've seen other years where everyone puts a name and votes that way if they want to be anonymous about it. There's no set procedure. However, you know, up to the, the group, how you guys want to decide, or if anyone wants to nominate, or if someone wants to nominate a sitting commissioner.
Well, I guess we can have a, we can do a discussion, or we can go in sort of descending order of chair, vice chair, secretary. As I sit here in the chair spot, though formerly I am the vice chair, I can continue, or I can be the chair if you like, though my, just a warning that my term is up at the end of, in about a year. So I've only got a year. So if anybody wanted to be chair for a longer continuity sake, I would certainly be amenable to that, but I'm happy to continue to, or I'm happy to fill the role for the year. And also a heads up that anyone taking the role of vice chair might be setting themselves up to be the chair. So, and then we learned of a new duty of the secretaries to manage this vote, I guess. So maybe I'll turn it over to you to, to lead the discussion.
All right.
And take, people take their own personal nominations or suggestions.
Do we just want to do a vocal? Is there anybody that wants to take on any of these three roles, or?
I'd be willing to serve any of the three roles as desired by the commission.
Okay. Anybody else looking to be on one of the roles? As acting secretary right now, I'm willing to stay as secretary or move to vice chair as well. So either, I'm fine with. So it looks like we have three that are willing to do it, so.
Don't all jump in line at once.
Well, I will say, as a rookie, of course, the idea of board cultures are a thing, and the idea that you want that continuity. So I'm all in favor of you guys doing exactly what you just said you wanted to do. That makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
And this is how it should happen.
All right. So Mitchell, did you want to do secretary or vice chair, which?
I truly have no preference, and I will defer to you as having been acting secretary, whether you would prefer to remain in that role or move to the vice chair role.
I'll take vice chair, even though I know that comes with.
When he's not here, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I'll be here, but like I said, after March, after March 31st of next year, I'm, I'm off. So.
Me as well.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Turn it away.
Okay.
Do we need to do a roll call vote? Can we do it for one, or do we need to do it separately for?
I think either works. If you already have, figure you have it settled out, perhaps a motion to nominate X as president, Y as, and that, and then I think a voice vote with the second would suffice.
You can do a slate of all, so you can have just a motion.
A motion? Yeah. I'll, I'll do a little rookie move here and just move that nomination of Brian as chair, Michelle as vice chair.
Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer. So, hang on, I'll get this. Jennifer as vice chair. I made my little notes here. Jennifer as vice chair, and Mitchell as secretary. So that's my motion as a slate for this coming year.
I'll second that. All right.
Who is chair? Pitalko.
Right.
All right. And then I think just a voice vote by the, by the group on that motion went second.
Aye.
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 All right. Okay. We all keep our literal chairs. More or less. All right. The next item is the delegation of site plan review to the site plan review committee. Do we need any discussion, or do you have a presentation on there? Did we just?
I, I do not have a presentation. Interestingly, I cover it more afterwards, but I, I will say briefly, today I had orientation with new commissioner Wilson. And broadly, one of the key roles of a planning commission in the state of Michigan by the Enabling Act is the authority to review site plans and approve site plans.
Right.
To any number of criteria. The Enabling Act and the city zoning ordinance does permit the planning commission delegate that authority. It is common in some larger cities, where in the city of Kalamazoo, a lot of our engineering and design review is done through the staff site plan review committee. And historically, at least since the late 90s, I know that that has been the annual vote. So the zoning ordinance states the planning commission is responsible for reviewing site plans, but then it also has that clause, or annually, they may delegate it to a staff site plan review committee, which then, you know, it's, the ordinance allows the site plans to be reviewed the, the same way. As far as that, that is pretty, that's about the gist of it. So it is a formality that would have to be undertaken. And site plan review is a review to ordinance. While site plan review is within the zoning code, the standards of approval that exist there cover many of the regulatory elements of the city of Kalamazoo. So where that staff review gets really deep into the expertise to, to review those. And in the staff presentation, I, I go more into that. And so that's about it. If you guys have any questions about the site plan review committee, the ordinance or delegating, I'd be glad to answer it. If there's no questions, similar, someone make a motion, second, and a voice vote.
Right. Any other questions? Okay. All right. I will say, one of my colleagues in Portage is on their planning commission, which is also their site plan review committee, and they therefore meet twice a month. Just putting that out there. They have two meetings. Okay. All right. In that case, I'll open the floor for motion.
I move to delegate site plan review to the site plan review committee.
I will second.
All right. Motion is made and second. All in favor? Aye. Pose. All right. Site plan review is delegated once again to the site plan review committee. All the best to them, and we thank them for their work. And then we've got an item here on an annual retreat in training, development process, and site plan policy update.
All right. Thank you. And it's kind of fitting, today we meet on Wednesday. In the world of staff, all of our site plan and project review is all Wednesday mornings. So that was definitely today, and that committee reviewed two site plans, I know, today. And the, the work continues. So the presentation, the annual, with the retreat, we try to do a training exercise or information for the planning commission to be better informed. This year, our department and very heavily the planning division, obviously, we kind of, you know, onward since the years of COVID, the adjustments we made during COVID that became permanent. Looking at the wider development process, we started to really take a look at how we were doing it, elicit feedback, and figure out what's working and what's not working. So I wouldn't call it, there's not new processes or, or new functions. It's rearranging almost the, the work functions to try and make it more workable. So I'm going to cover that. This was presented to the city commission. We've done developer outreach, and we are going to continue that conversation moving forward. Because as this will show, development is many things to, to many people. And then as part of which was couched in this work at the same time, Emily Shemansky, who's the planner that administers our site plan review process, did a complete overhaul of the policy, and I think has made a fantastic document. Beth has a copy of it, if you guys, I asked her to pass it down, if you guys want to kind of thumb through it. So think of, the zoning ordinance dictates a lot of, you know, approved when, and it can get really complicated. Where that policy document is, whether you're an applicant, big or small, it'll help explain where you're at, how long to take with a lot of visuals. So I'll present on all of that. So the way we try to condense this for, for development, because, you know, if anyone's ever done a project around your house, you know how important a project is to you. Scale size does not matter. And one of the key functions in the state of Michigan for a local government is building safety and orderly development. So it's completely in our wheelhouse. So to organize this, we've broken this up into internally three lanes almost. Pre-development, site plan review, and permitting, and inspections. So who does this process serve? That was our, our first question. And the process covers the city's role in land use and code administration from idea to occupancy. So whether you're ready to fill in a new hospital that you built and get people in there, or you want to put a 300-square-foot addition on the back of your shop, it, it's every step, where, where do I start? And that is a, a function of our office over there on Rose Street. So a lot of things coming in at a lot of times, and there's a lot to understand. So what does this have to do with you, the planning commission? If I've shown it to the city commission, we've talked to developers about it, and we're working with applicants. So the site plan review is a process outlining the Enabling Act and the zoning ordinance, which gives the planning commission the authority to approve or disapprove a site plan. And while that sounds simple, when you're getting into stormwater standards, state of Michigan standards, federal laws, utility engineering, old historical documents, you know, suddenly ghosts come out of the closet, if you will. know, suddenly ghosts come out of the closet, if you will. And annually, the planning commission either takes that responsibility or delegates it. So you saw number two was site plan review. It is obviously a very heavy part and it's also related to both at the end. Site plan review, I often call the first and the last step to any development. You need site plan approval before you put a shovel in the ground and then there is that inspection before you occupy it to make sure, you know, the right number of parking spaces are there. So what challenges came up? Something that came up a lot were inefficient channels. Where do I start? Who do I talk to? I talked to Pete, Christina, Bobby, Emily, who? So that's where we developed the, the pre-application. Pre-application internally for us is if you have not turned in an application, whether it's a signed permit, site plan, anything, you're in pre-development and you need to know what, if any approvals you need. So you could have pre-development, go right off to building and permitting and be done. Other ones are a much more complex process. So we've developed a, a direct point of contact, an application form and a tracking method for every single inquiry. And then, so that way, a, a small project doesn't just land on someone's desk, it's tracked and monitored and they get what they need to do. Sometimes you don't need anything from the city to take care of your idea, so that's also a possibility. Timelines, timelines are obviously very big. Time is money. A lot of people have planned a lot of things and delays are very impactful, whether it's a board delay or all the delays of the neighbors or the people trying to develop it. So really looking at all of that, looking at timelines and where can we put it in? Different project needs, again, different people come in at different steps. You might not know you need an approval until you're pretty far in design, or you might know it from the beginning. And lastly, of course, development can be complicated. You meet with the city for a few weeks, you talk to six different people and you learn all sorts of new things you didn't know existed and it's getting expensive. So these are, they're, they're real complications that make it real difficult for people. And so we're trying to figure out, how do we, how do we be able to communicate this easier so it isn't as intimidating as it sounds? So what are the opportunities that we hit for improvement? Staff spent the last year, as I said, evaluating the process, looking for gaps. And in 2025, here's some of the steps we've taken. We started this process in 2025 in January, so we, we've been doing this a few months now. I would say the reaction to some of the site plan changes have been positive. There's also some people, eh, I don't know about this, it's different, I just had the old way figured out. We have some of those comments. The revised site plan review policy. The city commission authorized some additional staff. A lot of development, a lot of complex development. One of those positions are a civil engineer directly related to site plan review. A lot of the engineering staff that reviews these plans are also the same engineers that make sure the water's running, the waste pipes are moving and the storm water is getting out when it rains too much. Obviously, all developments feed into that system, so they need to review those as well. With a dedicated engineer, they're a project focused engineer, which then opens up the capacity of, like, a few months ago, we had an unusual spike in water main breaks. That is going to be priority one for engineers to make sure that that water's clean. So those are capacity gaps because someone could face a delay if the water engineer had to address a water main break, for example. And we held a series of engagement meetings with the community and developers. We had developer focused ones. We hosted a, a virtual one, an in-person one. And the virtual one, we put together almost as a, well, as a reference tool for people that want to watch and understand it, or if you're new to the town. So that presentation is also available on the city's page. And moving forward, we're going to continue that dialogue where our development coordinator, relationship building, point of customer contact, and not just pre-development, you hit a hiccup somewhere, he's meant to be someone you can call, say if I'm working on a planning commission application and the engineers are working on a water main break, there's someone that you can call in the city that will connect you with who you need to talk to in the development process. So these are the, the people that actually do these jobs. Pre-development is PJ Thieringer. He's in the planning division, is the development administrator, that point of contact. Emily Shimansky is a planner. She administers and runs and coordinates the site planner view process. That site plan list at the end of your agendas every month is where she's keeping track of that. And that includes a lot of project contacts, people calling to figure out, hey, I saw this posted, what's going on there? Or coordinating all the reviews to get to applicants so that they know what they need to do next. And then permits and occupancy, Roger Iverson is the building official. The, the city employs a number of building mechanical and trade inspectors and they do hundreds of thousands of inspections. And that is, once your site plan and your permits approved, that thing is, is under construction for any number of time. And that is everything from, once you get your final certificate of occupancy or final inspection, that is meant to cover that. So from idea to legal occupancy, those are, once you're in each lane, that's like your main person for it, so. So again, to reiterate that one, two, three process, it doesn't matter where you come in, there is not, you have to do one. If you need a roof permit and you just need a one-page building permit application, the development administrator say, great, go here. Oh, you're putting an addition on? This is going to need site plan review in addition to it. Or you know what? You don't know where you want to start and you want to know if the city has incentives and you have four places in mind. Well, let's talk about this. There's not a project. And think of that internal tracking. You know, if you're still looking, that's going to be less of a priority. We're step two and three. We have people that have applied, people that have made fees. The clock is ticking to make sure we don't let that time extend beyond. Within that policy is the city's responsibility, by role and staff and applicant's responsibility. For example, when a site plan is received into our system and paid for, I think our timer gives us three business days to have it scheduled. So where, you know, if you have an incomplete application, that could delay it, but being able to ensure and monitor, are we meeting our time deadlines and are we meeting what we publish? So, and we, I think we have a very high success of reaching that. And it helps when you're in the mix of it to reference that document. Where step two, obviously site plan review, that could be any number of length depending on the project. And step three, you know, depending on how long it takes you to build and find, finish your building, that could be going on for quite some time. So some people, we have site plans probably from 22, 21, still under construction that were approved. So those decisions are still being looked at and closed out years later. And being able to reference and know what we did and do it accurately is a lot of that underpinning work of steps two and three especially. So for that first phase, everyone, no one, a lot of people don't, until you do your first project, you're not aware of the complexity. So as a way to steer that, do I come to the counter? Do I leave a message? Do I call 311? 311 is a great one, but we also have this landing page. So if we're talking to someone, anyone in the city about a project, hey, that sounds great, but do you have a pre-development in so that it's tracked? Because if you're talking about the rezoning with me, but you don't realize that you need to do these other things, you know, I'll still help you and get you moving, but I'm also going to make sure to get you in contact to see if, oh, before we rezone it, you might need to go to this other board in another division that no one was thinking about. So it's a, it's a simple form and it's being used quite a bit. And it also helps for, sometimes it is in a project, sometimes it's an idea. And then we can still give the guidance on it, whether it needs the, the city or not, because a lot of people do turn to the organization. I need to do this and I want to make sure I'm doing it right. So being able to get that to them quickly. And I believe Mr. Thieringer has, his timeline, I think, is 48 hours. You know, you'll get a response when you turn that in. So I need to start, I don't know where to go. Start with the pre-development webpage. Step two is that site plan review. We've updated the policies, I've mentioned. The biggest change, and I will go more of this later in the process, every site plan has a pre-site plan review meeting and a full site plan review. Generally, you're kind of introducing the project before you sink a lot of time and investment into final design. So it would be brought forward, you can get the feedback from the committee before you bring it back. So what we've done instead was there was an element of, you bring your project and you bring it to nine highly qualified professional code officials and engineers. And they give you a lot of information where it could kind of be difficult to parse out. That sounded really important, but it wasn't as important as this other thing, you know, by code. And most people aren't developers. It's a language that you don't do unless you really work in the industry. So the new format is, the full site plan review is a checklist. It's about eight pages. And if you go to that zoning ordinance section, conditions for approval, it's all the technical stuff you can imagine. It's broken up by water, sanitary, planning, zoning. So the format is you walk through your project with the reviewer, step by step in the checklist. Where is this item? And if it's not on the checklist, it's highlighted, you need to add this. And the previous method was, there would be a summary provided, hey, we met and here's all the things you should put on the site plan. Instead of centering, sending that long summary, you just get the copy of the checklist and it shows you what you already have and what's missing. So, you know, trying to think of some zoning statement, Bobby might explain it one way different than Christina, but at the end of the day, the checklist references the code section, staff is providing it. It's pretty dry, but everyone is using the same language, about the same standard throughout the process. So you're not trying to figure out, what you said in this email four months ago, you're referencing that same checklist. So then when you call back, and like I said, the, the feedback has been positive so far. I think the meetings, it sounds like they've become a little more dull, but site plan is dull. Sorry. And the site planner view committee is made up, as I said, the staff from many departments and we have the extra capacity. And site plan applications, once a project is scheduled for full site planner view, they are posted online. And something that has kind of percolated recently, if you go to the page right now, there's about three pages, there's some stuff there, why is that still there? The way we manage that is until that site plan is approved, it is posted, it's online. The idea being, if someone, someone becomes aware of it, it's not approved, we want them to be able to, to find it. So some projects hit a, a delay, there's a long window, excuse me, to turn in revisions. So if you ever see something we haven't talked about in a year, it's still waiting for something from the committee for approval. And then the third phase, the permits and occupancy, this is building inspectors, this is the plan review and everything during construction, things come up that require changes, a developer might let us know. And a lot of different staff are inspecting a lot of different aspects of the building. It's really its own process because all the plans are approved and that's what people are checking for those years. Some changes looking forward this year was in 2024, we had a number of staff vacancies. We have some of those positions filled. Some of those positions are posted right now. And in 2025, the building division now offers a pre-construction meeting. Pre-construction meeting is imagine you're in site planner view for three or four months, you went through all this stuff, finally I can get my building permits. Well, now you turn in building and code drawings, which are another set of code things. And there could be, you know, like the wave crashes back over you, if you will. So the intent of the pre-construction meeting was, it's almost like a pre-site plan of, hey, before you turn this in, we'll take a look at it, we'll meet with you. And that's largely contained with the building department and a lot of our contractors really like the sound of it. I'm sure some are already starting to use it. Something that always existed, but I think we're being more obvious to present it or make it part, that people know that it's out there. And then again, looking forward, how this process, like I said, it's already updated. We're communicating it out to, you know, city administration. We try to provide updates on development to the, the media. We're trying to be more aware of that. So people can be aware of it before things start to kind of help champion that message. We want to continue to have one-on-meetings with the development community, developers big and small. So we will be hosting those throughout the year and we, we want honest and, and critical feedback. The site plan review engineer, I know that that job's posted. I don't think it was posted today, so perhaps, you know, there's some candidates. We're going to, we started to modify our website to kind of match this, where when you go to our development, instead of all these different tabs, we're going to have the top three be pre-development site plan buildings. So you're kind of, that thing is being reinforced and hey, I just need to know where, where to go. And then, as I said, the continued dialogue where we will continue that moving forward into the year to, hey, what we've launched and whether we have to triage to make sure we have it really going good by 26. I will pause there if there's any questions. The next last third of it is the site plan policy update. So I can provide, here's what the committee is doing that you've just delegated the authority to. So if there's any questions or comments, right now I can stop here.
All right. I have one. So for this process improvement, is there an estimate or a goal of how much time this will cut out of the existing process?
That is the million dollar question. Yes, the answer is yes. We do track all of this. If you look, if you notice on the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet tells you when the pre-application was received, when the full site plan was received, when the meeting was held and the approval date. So when I used to manage the process, I have a few years of how long it took. And then this year, we're tracking what you see, but we're also tracking more triage to be able to, when, a year, hey, we did this, what can we report back? So yes, that is the goal. The results, with time, we will have the data to back up whatever answer there is. So I don't want to, I want to say it'll be the greatest, but I can't predict the future. All right. Well, moving forward, so yeah, here's the, the site plan process update. I was traveling last week and this is what I really describe site plan review as. It's the city's air traffic control. Anyone, development is complicated and knowing what's ready, what's not, who to prioritize, was it in order? Do you have this? Do you have that? And that goes for internal as well. There's a lot of plans of a lot of questions of a lot of staff. So kind of managing all of that information is a big role of Emily, our site plan coordinator, and she does a fantastic job at it. So I often like to think of Wednesdays of being up in that control tower and getting that project approved. Because if you're an applicant in the city of Kalamazoo and you're in the site planner view process, you want to develop in our city, you're developing something that has a board approval or is allowed by right, and you've assembled the team and done the work to get forward. So, you know, we have a high priority. Your success is the city's success, obviously. So kind of digging down, that's when you get into the zoning ordinance, you'll find a section in 8.387, there's 28 standards of approval. And some of those can be really intimidating, you know, that your stormwater design is compliant with all local and state, you know, mandates. And we have the staff to help you with that. A, a lot of the forms and it isn't as scary as it sounds. But at the end of the day, on top of the zone and you have to make sure that that rain water is getting where it needs to by that myriad of laws. So at the end of the day, if you have a site plan and it meets those and it's permitted, it has to be approved. And the site plan coordinator really works out a lot of that really meat and potatoes of, you can imagine nine different standards all needing to be met, you know, getting it all to work together is part of that work. And that is usually what ends up becoming the time constraint, because there's no, no reviewer outranks the other for you need them all approved. I think that used to be a way things were done perhaps years ago, but then you find out the little thing becomes a big thing when the bulldozer's digging. And secondarily, while the zoning ordinance addresses the process and standards of approval black and white, as I've described, it's, it's a beast of a process. So the policy and the reference documents, the staff procedure and policy documents are, are attempts to make that more palatable. We've always had them, but I think that this newest policy is very user friendly. For example, the calendar that existed, the old one, and I was the gatekeeper, that policy was not very user friendly. So I think the new one is an improvement, because that is oftentimes, an applicant, of course, they're going to sort through the things, but hey, if I wanted, if I needed to have framing up by June 15th, I really need to have that framing in by June 15th. So who are these people? What is going on? The site planner view committee is made up of nine dedicated reviewers, depending if it's an historic or NFP, we might yank in other reviewers that sometimes occur. So you obviously have the, in the, in our department, you have the building official, the zoning administrator and the planner sit on the committee with the planner running it. And they review it obviously to zoning and planning standards and the building code standards. From the public safety department, there's a couple of fire marshals in the city. We'll, we'll have a fire marshal that reviews everyone, so it's a full public safety review of the site. We'll have a fire marshal that reviews everyone, so it's a full public safety review of the site. We have an, the Environmental Programs Manager reviews it. That is for, I find a lot of citizens always, hey, that used to be a factory and you're putting houses there. How and what it takes to do that is the environmental reviewer. And it's often really one of those in the shadow things where there's a lot of due diligence and very complicated chemistry and scientific work that could come up and that is that reviewer is, she works in the Public Services Department. The traffic engineer sits on it, so for your access controls and if there needs to be street redesigns, an email that crossed my desk today is, was there a parking lot layout in front of 530 rows in the street? That we're trying to figure out, it looks like something might be lost in the wire. So, you know, is it there? And then we have three engineers related to water, sanitary and stormwater. One reviews for your connection to the water mains and your water infrastructure. Sanitary is for everything sanitary and a lot of our industrial users. We have a very unique plant, so even that can get really complicated. If you're putting a certain element into your system, there's a whole permitting or you're dewatering. So real fascinating work that delivers a high safe return if it's done correctly. And then lastly, the stormwater engineer. A big nuance with them is stormwater is obviously a massive issue in our city. We have a lot of floodplains. A lot of times when you redevelop something new, the current law requires you to keep that water on site. Most of our city was designed before that was a requirement. So there's a lot of nuance to that to make sure as we redevelop, we're adding the capacity, improving our water quality and are in line with state and federal laws. The planner in me is always interested by the complexity of stormwater. And each one of these all talk to each other. Do you sprinkle it? Well, now you're building officials talking to the water engineer and the fire marshal. Environmental says you can't put your stormwater over there, you have to cap it with a permanent. So maybe you should move your parking lot over there. And then planning goes, oh, wait a second, now your impervious coverage is too high. And that's where, that's what the committee is like doing beyond their review. And I put in there, if it's a historic district, we loop in the historic coordinator and Nolan Berkstrom in our department is the NFP liaison. So those, if it's in the NFP district, the NFP board is approving a site plan. And then as the final site plan gets approved, Nolan is kind of the check. NFP board approved this, the final plan is this, good. So, you know, sometimes projects grow a little bit. And as I mentioned, the site plan policy update, I think I covered all of these items already. Trying to be a more visually appealing, easily to reference document. And again, that change of the checklist format, where that former format would almost be a little bit of an information overload and we're trying to talk about the same standards specific to your plan on each project moving forward. Because you could even have the same developer come in and on three projects and go, how come I had to do this for stormwater here and that there? When you're having that conversation back to the standards, you should be able to make it clear. And highlighting a little bit of that, so the pre-site plan is gone, we have the checklist meeting and the site planner view meeting. So what happens after checklist? There's no, you have about a year, four months to not redo checklist or a year to then turn in your full site plan. So some people are ready to get into full site plan, others are not. Where the full site planner view meeting is not changing. We reviewed the checklist to make sure our standards were accurate. On the site plan website, all of the reference documents have been updated. Every few years, we update our water standards, for example. So we reviewed all that, reviewed our wording and made sure we were referencing that. And so the full site planner view process hasn't changed. There has not been an increase in the review time period. I think for larger projects, instead of saying three to four weeks, we now say three to five weeks. Something like the arena, for example, four weeks. But even with all the prep, like you really need your staff to dig through that. So if we get something really big or complicated, but that way we're also being upfront. This review is going to take longer because we have to unpack these issues. Again, this is the format, you know, for the pre-site plan meeting, you don't even need a site plan. So you could come and say, I want to do this on that site. And then you could be talking about, well, what does the lead to the water main mean? You got a main in your street, we know it's on this side of the road and you have to put it on an outside wall. So even that could start where if someone had a barrier of, I can't get the money together to even get a simple plan, you can at least then go to that professional when you're ready to go and hey, this is what the city wants, not I think the city wants this and you show up and it wasn't that. And that is the intent, trying to make it more predictable and more repeatable. And here you can see that there's a little cutout of the checklist and you can see where it's highlighted. And I didn't mention as well, on the column as well, we provide the code reference. I have to add a fire hydrant, where does it say that? Is a very, very common, and it's not just fire hydrants, it could be for anything. And those are very good questions and applicants should ask, hey, wait, why do I have to do this? So, because I know our staff, you know, we reference it, you know, we do it all the time, but sometimes I might know a section John Q. Public doesn't. So with that, if you don't have it, we will put the code reference in there. And a lot of times Emily will even hyperlink it. So you just have to click on it and it takes you right to the website. So again, that complicated process, you're talking back to the code. And a lot of times, the Site Planner Review Committee cannot design it for you. So we are telling you, here's the code, there you go. So that's a little bit of a nuance or a benefit for staff to help make the process easier. And again, this is the full site plan, mentioning how the process is very similar to the current one. It is the final step in site planner view, that's usually the time. You might need a building permit, a right-of-way permit, sign permits, soil erosion permits. M-dot, you know, if it's on a state highway, you might need that from them. So all of that, you could have your applications in, you could have them ready to go, but everything is held internally until you get site plan approval. The idea being you don't want to start something and have to fix it later. It's much easier to do on paper. So that is still going to go the same way and that is really the goal. The timeline increase in site plan review, while it's a three-week review, okay, I need one revision, what you may plan on. But here you are two months later, you're four revisions in. How can we prevent revisions from miscommunication is, I think, where the highest return can be. So I'm very hopeful in it. And with that site plan review civil engineer, that has always been a little bit of a nuance. You know, I know development, I know it well, but I only know so much and we have a lot of staff that are much more qualified. So there's a lot of items where I'm going to ask our staff, is this correct or not? And again, having that dedicated person who can speak all of that engineering language or be able to go to the staff yields a high return because the City of Kalamazoo manages a large swath of infrastructure over a wide geography. And like I said, sometimes different priorities come up. And I think that's going to be a big return because sometimes I don't want to give false information that would impact the water engineering or cost the applicant money. And last of all, up there, it's not as easy as it used to be. It's a little bit longer, it used to be kalamazoo city.org/sitplannerview. But there's the website. If you go to that three-panel development page I was talking about, you would get here or you type it in. So when you're ready to apply for site planner view, anything and everything you need could be there. You can fill out your checklist application on there, you can pay for your applications on there, you can get the paper copies, you have the staff contacts, you can find site plans that are currently under review. And then the site plan resources are, hey, I need, what is a chemical storage inventory form? And hey, they mentioned the water specs, all of those documents are going to be in there. And that's also part of that packaging. On Friday is when Emily sends the summaries to all of our site plan meetings. So that's really, here's all the information you need, get going. And with that on there, we're able to communicate it and make it. It's been, obviously, since COVID, we went from a very, we went in two weeks from a blended paper and digital process to all digital. And everyone, the developers and planner reviewers on the virtual format really like it because you can have experts on your team from anywhere. And a more interesting one is it used to be so hard to look at a plan and you got 11 people around you, no one could see everything. Now everyone sees it on the screen. So there's a resource there. If you can't get ahold of Emily, you can't get ahold of PJ, we're highly confident we have a lot of that on there. But you don't have to look through there, you could always call us, email us to help navigate it. And that is kind of what we've done, or a lot of that work is really goes to Emily Shamansky to update and redo the policies and procedures of site plan without really reinventing the wheel. And that's, you know, what we're working on in C-Petter after you guys make a decision to get them on their way.
All right, any follow-up questions? All right. Oh, thank you. City planners report, unless that was it?
Yeah, that was it. There's no other updates or information. As I mentioned, we will have a meeting in May. We received a rezoning application. And I'm also talking with a property owner that has a cell antenna and it sounds like that cell antenna would have to be replaced, which triggers a number of board things, so I would count on a June meeting as well.
Okay. And then a master plan update at some point?
Correct, yep. I know that we don't have one today. We did the meetings and the open house last month. And full disclosure, I was off last week. So if there was an update, you know, I met Christina today before the meeting, but no Imagine Kalamazoo updates, we're now in that middle phase of collecting information. So feel free to submit comments or go to Imagine Kalamazoo and if there's something you want to add there, please get it to us.
Understood, thank you. All right, and then that brings us to, sorry, the site plan list. Do we need to approve that as well? That is in the last page of your packets. We just need a motion to approve?
No, it's just if you guys ever have any questions, we present it. And another question that kind of came up in the last month was, hey, there's more site plans on the website than your list. Maybe we'll change this, but once the year changes, I just put the different list in there. So there's obviously site plans which might still be under review from '24 or, so it's just sitting out there. But it's a good lesson for, hey, someone's looking for the information, here's how I find it. So, or here's what I found, so.
All right. Any questions on the site plan list? All right. In that case, we will open it up again to public comment. That number is 888-382-9556. Here we go.
Good evening caller, you are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission for public comment on agenda items.
Yes, my name's Richard Stewart. I own 824, 828, 842 Portage Street. I came to this town in 1987 and began repurposing commercial buildings then. And the current state of site plan process is basically prohibiting small business owners from repurposing existing properties. It has become unmanageable for a small business to reuse existing empty stock and in any reasonable way, open a small business in those buildings, reuse them at or below their intended zoning or use. I have done this a number of times with unused buildings with no obstacles until about 10 years ago. It has gotten worse until about COVID. The current site plan process is absolutely prohibitive to reuse an existing building without the obstacles. The site plan process has scared away at least three purchasers of my property. U-Haul wanted to spend $5 million reusing, building a new complex at my site, was buying three different owners' properties here. And after we were under contract for six months, Paul Theringer apparently was so unpleasant to the developer that they just canceled the deal and walked away from their deposit. Most recently, the developer who wanted to use the existing building to put a UPS-type packaging store in my existing building was scared away from a purchase specifically by Paul Theringer and his team in the site plan pre-stage. So listening to Bobby Dirkie talk about all this as a matter of fact is sickening because I've been a victim of this new procedure and it is unable to be met by a small business. I hope you'll consider that.
Thank you. Any other callers?
No other callers.
All right. Seeing no one in the audience with that, we'll close public comments and we'll invite Commissioner Pradel for City Commission Liaison comments. Welcome.
Hello, welcome everyone. First off, Jennifer and Brian and Mitchell, congratulations on being elected into leadership. Thank you for serving in that role. Also, congratulations to Tom and Zach and Mitchell again for being confirmed again to serve in the role as well. So we're glad you're here and this is a great group. I'm excited to work with you all. Just to kind of recap for those who are new, I take this liaison responsibility very seriously. I really enjoy coming here because it gives me a chance to learn about what's coming forward to City Commission. There's so many times it's been incredibly valuable to hear your perspectives and then pass that along at a commission meeting, hear what the public has to say. But also it gives me a chance to then come back and tell you how we voted on your recommendation. And so there's really nothing to report back on in the more recent month except your confirmation, basically, Zach and Tom. So anyways, thank you for the chance to do that with you. I was curious, did anybody have a chance to attend the Respecting Differences event today that was co-sponsored by the City of Kalamazoo? It was on neurodiversity, we do that each year in partnership with City of Portage, Kalamazoo County, ISK and Western Michigan University, I think K College as well. But it's a great event. Definitely encourage you to attend it in the future if you can get a chance to. But this year we're some speakers on neurodiversity, which was really neat. I think Bobby talked a little bit about this, but we're still looking for feedback on our Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 planet phase. This is incredibly exciting time, folks. I mean, we are charting the future, next 10 years of the City of Kalamazoo. And I will tell you from my nearly six years' experience on the City Commission, we are not a community that shelves a binder of a plan. It is a living, breathing document that is very much alive today. And by the time we get to the end of the goal post of the Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 plan, we will have achieved the vast, vast majority of the things we set out to do. So involvement very much matters. And if you go to our website, there's an orange banner at the top of the webpage. And if you click on that, there's some online opportunities to engage. You still have an opportunity to give an online vision statement. So if you want to share what your vision is for the future of Kalamazoo. And then there's also a goal survey that's still live that you can take as well. There's one more event coming up on April 29th at Crawlspace Theater, 6:30 to 8:00. So if you get a chance to attend that, that would be great as well. And then if you want to be a part of helping beautify the community, this weekend's going to be a great chance for that. There's two beautification events. There's one on Saturday at Mayor's Riverfront Park from 10 to 3:00. It can help pick up litter, they're going to try to remove invasive plant species. And then on Sunday, you can go over to Verberg Park and do the same thing or by the Kalamazoo River, I believe, the same time as well. You can find out more about both of those on Kalamazoo City's website. Anyways, I hope you all have a great night. I can't believe what we're seeing outside in our windows right now, but we'll prevail. So anyways, thanks so much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. That brings us to any planning, Commissioner comments? Anybody have any items of interest or suggestions? Things like river cleanup would be exactly what we're looking for. All right, I will just once again say welcome to our new members. I thank you for your interest, thank you for willingness to serve. Promise it will be interesting. All right, with that, I guess we are adjourned. All right, with that, I guess we are adjourned. Thank you all, have a good night.